For a work session.
I have a motion to get us going on work.
No, we don't need a motion, that's right.
Thank you, Kendall.
You always have to keep me in line. Alright, work session, go. You can have your hat on, because we're not even saying the slide when we do work sessions. We usually just do whole ones in the regular sessions, so I'm in transition mode. Hello, good evening, we're sorry for the delay, and that you're so kind to wait for us, as well as principals. I don't know why you're here, you have a million other things you could be doing right now, but thank you for your support.
They care about their buildings.
Indeed, indeed, and I appreciate that, I just know that the job is exhausting. You too, Cole.
Since we are running behind, I know that, just a couple of things that Suzie and Stuart talked about, just how to kind of move through the process, so we're gonna get to where we were last year, and just making sure that we're all on the same page at each step as we move forward, and so that we can be efficient and productive and have the outcomes that we all hope our schools are for short term, and what a bond of 25, 20 to 25 years with the community. So, one of the things that we just talked about was, just a quick kind of summary, if we can understand, really, what does the board want from a bond? I know that's a bigger discussion, but we talked about it earlier, but I just wanted to start with that question, so we could ground this discussion there, in light of everything.
Is that the question?
Yeah.
Remember? What does the board want?
Oh, I got you.
Okay, okay, yeah. Like, she's passing up papers, but being conversational, so like, that's her question to the board, right?
Yeah, it's just our guiding notes.
Okay.
Well, for me, it's to be stewards of our buildings. So, first and foremost, you know, addressing the amenities which are safety, ADA, compliance, and, and just like, you know, those homeowners, things that we would take care of with agents, infrastructure and buildings. Those are the first things, and, and second things are to, you know, over time, education changes, and our buildings are, are old, and how they're designed are, and to bring more current relevant space into 2022, or, you know, whenever we get at it, into the, into the current time and space. Those are, for me, the
I would say ghetto to everything that Jessica said, I mean, really foundationally, to bring all of the old deferred maintenance, crumbling, decaying, rusting, non-functional, because that's also costly, right? I mean, I just moved in last year to a 1954 cabin and had a ceramic furnace in there that worked like a champ, but what it was costing me was a lot, so I tried to have that backed out by six people and rebuilt, so, right, it took a hit for that, but it's gonna be saving in the long term, and so, you know, what, what are those things that Stuart knows and we don't, that need priorities? The other thing is, again, yes, buildings, updating our learning space for kids, does that mean knocking down walls and, you know, like epicentral type stuff? What does that mean? I don't know, but what, what do we do to modernize our learning environments to the way we want to teach, the way we want kids to learn? And then, like it or not, there's some, there's some beautification there, there's upgrading of playgrounds and fields, and just some aesthetics, nobody wants to walk into a dismal place. I think the more that you tour buildings that have been refurbished or kept parts and redone, Harrison saw on Facebook the other day, they just ripped down a significant portion of Carmel Middle School, I was a principal for five years, missed the opening, I'm sad to say, but beautiful new building for, for the community, and so, what does that mean for a community to see that? So I think, we really, I, I don't believe that our constituency didn't want these things. I believe we didn't have a conversation like this enough about what do you want, what do you want to see, and so, there you go.
Can I jump back in, huh?
Jump back in, yes.
I forgot a couple things. We're manatees, and so, and Jack brought this up a while ago as well, and it's solar power, reclaimed water, these types of sustainable ideas fit who we are as, as a, as a community, and so, I think whether schools are doing it or not, we could lead the way in this, and I would really like to see that have an overall scope and the encompassment to all of this stuff that we, that we decide on and propose. Alright, thanks.
I mean, everything that has been said so far, and just in addition, you know, we talked about this before, that idea that, you know, it's a student's job to come to school every day and work and learn, and how do you create a serious learning environment where that happens?
I would have to agree with everything that's been said, and also, yeah, the other aspect of this is homeowner and attitude, and, you know, getting a school that is wanted, people want to come to the school. You know, you look at it saying, okay, out of pocket, we're gonna spend this much money, but, and what is gonna be your return when you have a house, when you have a community that people are trying to get into and they can't? So if you look at it long-term investment, it is a long-term investment, and it's gonna cost each person some money, but if they look at the end of the day, what is it gonna do for them? What is it gonna, you know, their return on investment is gonna be great, so, I would, we need to do this.
Yeah, I think a thoughtful approach is how we spend, how the money is spent, because if we're stewards of buildings, we're also stewards to the taxpayers' responsibility to them to spend their money, well and why is it that they get confidence we're doing that? And they got to this point, and we did not set this up, but, but the average utility electric bill per year, don't go listening, Gary, because this is your business, but $149,000, so I love solar panels, but anyway, we can't get that other best grant I was told.
Okay, so then, what we thought, and Matt's gonna facilitate this next part, is that we, we gave the Excel spreadsheet, thanks Matt for putting that together, it was really awesome. Stuart and Suzie and I did that independently, we did it together as well as an exercise, really kind of taking together what we learned along the way, where our current buildings are, and just escalation costs and just some conversations. That's a, that'll turn that, that question over to you, so we can kind of go from there.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we thought, and we kind of talked about, is that everyone sort of did their own bond, is, I think, you know, maybe as a first step even, just to discuss, like, what number did you come up with on your, your page, and what did you find that was easy to cut? What was things that, you know, maybe was a little harder to cut? Just to get a sense of, a little bit more from the first question of where you are and what, what was, I guess, where your priorities sat, because doing it myself, it's not an easy, easy process.
So, and one thing, we've talked about using some adaptive school strategies, Suzie's gonna take notes of what, what you say, so we can paraphrase by each board member, so that we can make sure we've captured it and can move forward like that.
Kind of one ground question, so, yeah, you give a sheet somewhere to this from last June, the rankings, were those done by, by you and your team? The 1, 2, 3, 4? Yeah, yeah, it was a bigger group, not just me, but it was like Stuart, Elizabeth, Suzie, some other folks in the room.
Non-construction.
The visioning team and the feedback we got.
Okay, and we tried to, yeah, we tried to take, with students, teachers, staff, we tried to take things we heard from them, but at the end of the day, we sort of created a $43 million option, a $35 million option, a $25 million option, based on, on those priorities.
What I have for you here is what the 43 last year was, and knowing that this does not include the 15% escalation that is now figured into this.
Another item to try to throw in the mix, since it was certainly a factor in the bond both is middle school, high school combined. And so, I know constituents and community members that I've spoken to, you know, and I did bring this up previously, and we get, we get the response that they're going to be separated, but I don't know that community believes that, and there, there is some, you know, I've heard from a number of folks some very strong concerns around that, so, if it's going to remain that way, have details around what that means, how we can separate the middle school age kids from the high school age kids.
Well, I thought about that too, because that, I don't know what else to say, it doesn't sound good, but people just didn't get it, they didn't get, why are you putting that there? Like, if we need things, then what, I mean, right, architecturally, it's beautiful, yes, we understand the open learning space, that would be nice, but what might it be like if we just said, keep everybody where they are now, and just this, this, and this, and then the upgrades in each independent building? You know what I mean? That, that's what I heard from people unfortunately after the fact.
And you guys are jumping ahead, but, I get it, we knew that would be a big topic discussion.
Yeah, but I look at just, you know, the spreadsheet and everything, like, independently, like, I can't, I can't sit there and go, well, this is a no, or this is a no, because I don't have the expertise to know how all these things interface, you know, it's like when I tell my husband I want to take out that wall, and he goes, okay, but if we take out that wall, then we have to do this, and I'm like, well, if we're gonna do this, then we should do this, and he goes, but then if we do that, we also have to do that, right? I mean, how many people have done homework, right? You know that, I, I don't know how that impact in the synergy of each of these items, right?
Yeah, and I think the sort of, the loop we're catching in is, I don't know what you guys are willing to spend or willing to go out to a bond for a dollar now.
And that's a
And so we either have to come
Good question, I mean, that is
Point of, here's the scope we need to do, here's what that costs, do we cut scope or is that cost acceptable, or we start with cost, here's what we feel is a dollar amount we feel comfortable with, and then we can show you what that means as far as scope. It's just, you know, it's, and, and I'm not
No, 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 no.
Wrong or what I'm saying, it's just, that's the challenge.
Right, that's how you, that's how you would say, this is what we're gonna do, is by knowing what that cost, dollar amount is.
The one thing we've talked about as well is, you know, the the new, the new build in this parking lot was where a lot of expense was gonna go, right? So, we, we tried to reframe that and think about how can we still maybe accomplish having a solely middle school building where there wouldn't be any interaction? It could be completely separate, so we worked through that, that's still gonna be extremely expensive in terms of renovating this building to be middle school classrooms, and then also, there, there need to be an extension a, a bit for this building, and I have a drawing of it, and then addressing still some of the ADA issues that are happening when we took out that building, so we have that plan. And then we have a separate one where we keep middle school where it is, we add a, a small addition to this building, and a media center that does connect through this separate bridge, because we still have to take care of the ADA. So we have like a scaled approach, kind of taking that, that complete new build off the table is where we, we kind of thinking about the feedback we received, how do we scale that back? And then today, we work through another model, but if we, so two different options, I really think the board, do we want to move middle school all the way up here, create this separate, separate experience that will cost more to do that? Or do we want to keep this building pretty much intact, add a smaller, and I have a map for you, add a smaller addition for itinerant space for B and D.
B and G.
Robotics and those things, and it would only add maybe 9,000 square feet.
Yeah.
And then, and a bridge space there, so we can adjust, so that would be cheaper way to do it, and we could disperse a lot more of the money to other buildings, so, that's where we started today, thinking, what, what's on, what's on your minds? So, because we also heard voters and colleagues and principals.
And so really, that bridge would be a walking bridge for a
Media center.
Rolling bridge, right? Yeah, okay.
Well, so media centers different than bridges though.
Yeah, so to get to the media center is what I
No, it would be a media center.
Bridge?
Yes. I mean, and those details can be worked out, it could be a walking bridge, it could be a media center.
Yeah.
I guess the point is, you made a physical indoor connection between these two points.
Or a
Going back outside.
Yeah.
What is, what is the cost, if we did that, and we keep the middle school where it's at, we know that that building isn't really adequate for a great learning space? I mean, what are we going to, how are we going to improve that, and what is the cost of that gonna be to make it a better building for?
So Suzie and I, and Stuart and Matt, you talked about that today, and have worked out some numbers of what that middle school upgrade would include, but it does not include any educational improvements, because those haven't been cost estimated, any kind of design structure, so, so, so I can share that with you, and this is sort of our first step, but, or do we want to hear first ones board, what your numbers are? What, what would be more beneficial?
I don't think I have, no, I mean, the, the fact that several of us were like, yes, to the previous one, indicates that our number wasn't the same as all of the voters, or enough of the voters, I mean, so I don't know what I'll say, and so unless we went back out to constituencies, said, what number do you like, or what do you need to get to this number, right? I mean, those are the two questions, right?
Or it is either the number wasn't right, or just the work wasn't right.
Correct, exactly, we don't know, that's what I'm saying, which one is, which of that is that?
It's also time.
We don't know, right?
Kind of both related, obviously.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a balance of those two things.
I think
Anybody wants to come remodel my bathrooms, because I can't find someone to do it, it's the same difference.
Not doing the middle school and moving the whole thing up here will probably save a ton of money, and probably will not harm children's education, but I think that's, I don't remember what the number was, although I've got stuff from the last year as well, but I think the new building was like $20 million or something, is I, even, was I?
It's there, it's on this paper.
Oh, is it? Okay. Yeah, it was 20 23, 4, okay, now that was, so, we're in a really tough time in construction, and so, what cost 23, 4 last year cost about 27 million this year? We saw about a 1% per year, 1% per month, that's increase escalation over the last 12 months. So, we're not, we haven't repriced anything, because we're just trying to give you rough ideas, so we've, I've put an escalation factor of 15% on all the estimates, because we just don't have the time right now to go out to the market and figure out, re-figure every single one of those numbers.
Right, and they're busy, we were done last
Yeah, so, and it's safe to assume that if they were locked in at X number, $100 per square foot, or whatever that it was,
that they would have jumped that price up, that they would have held that place with lumber prices at 300% or whatever.
But once we, I mean, this is into the contract, but once we sign a contract with a contractor, then that isn't caring for us. The sub is now, because they can order ahead, they can do, we, we've been working through this on different jobs, where we, we store stuff more often now, we order generators a year in advance, because no one will hold a price on a generator. So, there's hurdles you can get around those things, but to, yeah, once the person who estimated made their best guess, based on a starting date of construction, had bond passed, had best grant passed, and everything passed, and we thought we could get this project kicked off, I mean, he gave us his best, but he's, he's, he's guessing too, right? So, the fact is, it could have been higher than what that 23.4, or whatever the number was that year, absolutely.
You mentioned that there's one that's moving the middle school to the still building, but not connecting the two?
Uh, moving, sorry, Suzie?
Moving the middle school to the still building, but not connecting?
Yeah, they would still need to connect, we have not priced that out, but if that happened, as we've talked about, really, how, how can we still accomplish this, this project? It would increase costs.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I guessed it at about 19 million, when I went back to my thing, and all I really did was take a calculation of constructions cost I'm seeing today on new bill, put that to the new construction, and then took the square footage of this and took it off a previous renovation job that cost four square foot, so, that's how, I just want to be clear on how rough these numbers I'm creating are, I'm using market numbers, but they're not apples for apples.
So, that's an option, is, is for the board to decide, is it that valuable for all middle school students to be in this space? And, and that would include there'd be an additional, some builds at the high school, some, some added square footage, because, for example, a couple of our classes up here are high school teachers, they would move into a different space in the high school, so that would have to be reconstructed. So that, that's where that cost does increase pretty significantly.
And we haven't, like, trainer hasn't been able to dig into that, to see, this is sort of the paperwork, you know, it's not, an architect hasn't really gone in and seen like, okay, we could put this here, we could put that there, we make this real work, it's just sort of concepts that we're trying to throw numbers to.
Want to get your perspective before we Yeah, the, the third option, and I think, Gary, to your question that you asked around what would it cost during the middle school, up to some semblance that is, yeah, it could be long lasting for the next 25 years and beyond. So what Suzie and Stuart and I did today, was the one titled Suzie, Stuart, and Elizabeth. We took the priorities, the assessment priorities from the previous bond package, and you can see, like, at high school, that's $8 million. Previously, if you compare it with this, this one, that one, this, like, the 43 million, it used to be 6, 6.2, but remember, that doesn't include the 15% escalation. So, and we added a, a few other things, knowing that there wouldn't be as significant of a remodel for, like, itinerant spaces and those things.
I think the biggest one that we added for all buildings was to replace the piping, as we were thinking through this and thinking, what are we gonna do if this is the one bond for 20 or 25 years? What are we, what do we really, really need to make sure that we have intact to make these buildings last, and you thought that that was necessary?
So, so you can see, if you look at that high school, there's 8.8, and that does not include any educational upgrades, and the only reason we said that is because we haven't done any scope work of what that would look like, so, at the bottom, we kind of estimated middle school and high school to be about $3 million, so, and then you look at the, the middle school project there, assessment priorities, just to address what a return needs, is about 3.3 million, and then about the 921,000 is mostly the upper
Great deal. Um, one thing, because they, because when we had the last bond, we were building this 612 joint building that had different entryways, so we never cost out what safe entry was for both, either the middle school or the high school, and the midway, so those aren't included in either of those prices either. Just to have that, because that's something that we know we would want to include.
And, and, and to be honest, and I'm dusting can speak to this as well, we never heard a really strong poll that teachers at the middle school were excited about coming up here. So, I don't know what that means exactly, but, in a lot of ways, I think what it tells us is that they're really happy with their, their community, and I think that's something that we started to really
That they like their space.
They like their space, they like that defined space, but the building does need to be renovated, and as you said, guys, just upgraded to current, current standards, so, we have a, we, that $900 was really for the activity build, it doesn't include any educational programming, so, new lab space, science lab space, or anything, I don't know, other media upgrades, things like that. So
The students actually said at the middle school that they liked the small school environment, based on our master plan, that you got a good box here.
Well, it's just the same size, right? I think this was the same size, this will be the same
I wonder if the square
It wasn't gonna be any bigger.
It wasn't going to be any bigger. It's still going to be a small school.
Except for a big school that crossed the street, but anyway.
Okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify again. It wasn't a bigger school.
Yeah, that's right. So you can see the silk doesn't have too much based on these estimates. Um, when you get to main elementary school. Um, assessment priorities are very significant and you can see that does increase, um, because some of the pipe. And we also added air conditioning. We heard from, from staff at the middle elementary school that.
And parents.
And parents. And so we can't pass a bond without air conditioning at the elementary school.
If you want to speak to that. I said that that is one of the biggest problems for parents of their school. And as we come back in the summer of the year, it's got, what are you guys going to address this one scrambling? And I don't know if it's wrong, but we've got a series of air units that Stuart helped us with, that our building is not equipped to handle. Everything else uses and so the, the air conditioning that's in. And then they didn't have power in the rooms. There were no lights and so you can only run the air conditioning every like third room.
There's no cheap, quick fix to warm rooms. That's, that's for sure. I mean, that's, that's roofwork. Um, you can't just add condensers on the roof and. Uh, and not reinforce that roof. So that, that price obviously increases significantly. And, and, yeah, we didn't really hear much about that when we were doing all of our.
We actually heard the opposite when we were doing the meetings. It's only a few weeks.
As you looked through the priorities, it was, yeah, that's, that's not one, but obviously I know we heard a lot of, we heard that afterwards, unfortunately.
For me personally, I'd love to discuss, address some of the ABA and ADA issues. So probably more pressing for me than anything. That's one thing when we did this ADA was for every single building was a number one priority.
Everything, yes.
Safety and ADA.
Or not, yeah. So this, um, we actually put, took for the, the elementary package is seventy five percent. We took the seventy five percent educational upgrade, not the hundred percent. So. Um, it would, it could actually be higher from the original bond. It was a little bit more there. So that's that U pass. We kept. Um, the assessment priorities that were there, that includes the roof and, and those things secure in two ways. And then the educational upgrades, we took the seventy five percent package, not at the hundred percent. Knowing that's again escalation. At the athletic fields, we kept all of those things the same. And the bus barn, uh, pretty similar. Some, my chicken scratch at the bottom, what you're not going to, what you'll see. So that what we came from that package is thirty four million. What is not included in here is, um, those educational program upgrades, which would include media center work. Because we have to address that. We need to address the, um, security way for the high school and reconfiguring these spaces here. And then also the itinerant space and we estimate, I don't know, not what do we say like roughly five million dollars.
Yeah.
And then also what's not included in here are safety alarms, um.
Intercom, mag releases, key card entry and for the cameras, cameras, those are.
So this, this gets to about, um, like about forty, forty one million dollars there with these projects.
And that still leaves deferred maintenance, the level two and level three priorities at about almost seven million dollars. So at our normal five hundred thousand dollar transfer. Too much for life of the bond.
This is considering no best. So if we apply for best and we were to get the best, then we could pull off. A pretty significant chunk, which could be security ways, roofs, um, high school and middle school roofs were not included in this. Uh, so this is, this is sort of the package that we, we thought in terms of the feedback we received. Um, that you all have also kind of received.
And one thing we, we thought we could add some more to that, play around with it. Obviously without the, the new build is a big chunk of our best this time and we wouldn't have that. So. We have to kind of fall in and see what we could create or put in there. Um, but we did get some news this week that isn't great for us. That our percentage match, it changes every year and we are now a seventy two percent match. Yeah, instead of sixty five, so.
Yeah, so our twenty five million dollar package for best, which was, would have been sixteen from the district and nine from CD, CDE. Is now equivalent twenty five million is now eighteen million contribution from the district and seven million received from, from the state. So. Two million dollar flip off there.
I, I'm just one, you know, person there, but I'll just, I, I really appreciate what you're doing, trying to. You know, do some cost savings and places I nature. But again, if we keep the middle school where it's at. As you stated, there's no educational improvements down there. And the biggest problem thing for this is. Is improving it for better education. And I looked through this whole thing and I, and I'm, you know, I've been pretty sad on what we had before. I think our whole program was, you know, it's a Jack saying, we got to be good stewards of the money. And I think being a good steward of the money is to build something that's going to last another thirty, forty years. Put us into the future, not build something that only costs. We cut corners and do this and we're going back out there in ten to twelve years trying to get another bond. And we haven't even got the first one paid for. So I don't think that's be, uh, like say a good steward. We need to. I guess where I'm at is I wouldn't change anything that we got. The only thing we need to change is. More outreach to the community, more education to the community and move forward with what we have in place. That would be fine.
I agree with Gary aside from the fact that I do think that we have heard some things like. Air conditioning at the elementary school and things like that. So I think there are some adjustments to be made, but I think that. At the end of the day, when we make the adjustments, we're still going to be at the same number we started. But I do think that, um, we are going to probably change what we're covering those costs. But playing with the numbers too, I, I just keep falling on this forty three. I don't know.
Especially with the increased cost right now. I mean, I don't know that's going down fast. But I, I, I agree with you now is that I think we could use the opportunity with, since it didn't pass to, to relook at things and see. Are there some, some different, uh, ways to do things? But ultimately. If you did a cost cutting measure and we're at forty one versus forty three. I mean, not a scope of things.
And as a taxpayer, we're, we're building two media centers. It's a one media center. We're doing two of every, like we're building two of everything and just be aware. To taxpayers that we're duplicating up there. It's the, the original drawing consolidated, just so that that's clear.
And, and you're right, like maybe if there's the bridge, the media center. But that whole wing, uh, on this diagram has to be reconfigured dramatically. So. There's going to have to be a chunk of, of money that goes there because, uh, of the security issues there. The ADA issues there. There's a lot, there's going to be a lot of investment along the, the high school, the south side of the high school.
Yeah, say we do no bridge if we're trying to cut some bigger costs. I mean, it's very difficult when you add an ADA. Security concerns and then we get into deferred maintenance, but you start cutting that number down and trying to find. Those areas, there's things that you just cannot cut when investing for the next twenty years. So to solve those problems by changing the layout or keeping the middle school down there. You, by doing that, you actually leave problems that still need to be solved that are a significant cost. So it, it is. It's tough to, to look at it a different way to kind of piggyback on what Gary was saying.
I think all the ADA stuff and the security stuff, I mean, those should all be included in any plan. The question is, you know, the biggest chunk of, of money. As proposed before, basically half the grant or half the bond, I'm sorry, was to move the middle school up the hill. And the question is, is that really the best return on the taxpayers' investment? Because they've already got a media center at the middle school. They've already got a media center here. I'm never here today. So I have no idea how much those are used or not. Um, if we feel like we need a bridge across, then we should do a bridge across. Again, all the ADA stuff should all get done. I mean, so nobody's, that's not even really a negotiation. On all the security stuff and safety stuff, all that should be done too. That's not, I mean, I don't think the taxpayers have. A bit of heartburn over that. But, but again, lots of taxpayers aren't getting everything that they necessarily want. And, and so I think we need to be prudent, uh, with that because again, I've got my, my tax file yet this year, but I thought I'd be here by December. Um, but people are going to be getting those, I think, in the next couple of weeks. And that's going to, you know, be an eye opener just because the cost of the houses went up. So I just think we need to be, you know, to not make the same, to, to try to take a bit of a different approach this time. Rather than think that, you know, bond was the right thing regardless of. Those fifty seven percent of people devoted against that are uninformed.
And that's why we're going through these numbers today. It was pretty interesting when you look at that middle school. I mean, these numbers, one thing they don't, this thirty four million. One thing that doesn't include is the work that needs to be done on the structure of that middle school, shore that up. We all, we talked about that before. I'm not sure we have a true number, um, or a ballpark map, but we, we have identified that that's fairly expensive. So the, the remodel, if you want to call it that, at that middle school. It's, it's big. So it is kind of funny as you shuffle things around, it ends up being very, very similar.
The mind is thinking that wasn't the safety issue, that it wasn't they, uh, their cracks in the stuff and doors have to be readjusted.
I kind of fall down, but it, um, in terms of like the, the life of the building, uh, they don't see it falling down.
It's not going to stop moving either.
Yeah.
So everything we do to it, you fix the drywall, you fix the thing, it's going to keep moving. It's going to keep the two. Yeah, I mean, just someday, I mean, it's, it's kind of like escalation. None of us can know for sure. Someday it could become a structural issue and they live another two hundred years and never. But it, the ground's moving, it's going to continue to move. I think that's.
An aesthetic or not, it's also a safety issue. Um, I mean.
Suzie tried today, walking into Dustin Don'ts today.
Yeah.
I thought the floor was flat.
The, not slopes, but more importantly, I mean, right in front of, uh, Don's classroom, Dustin. Uh, concrete heaving up and, and we're having a tripping hazard right in front of the classroom. Again, that's one issue, but it's happening. So it'll be something that will have to be continually addressed with tile. You can't purchase a match and piece it together. So. Again, some of it, some of it does turn aesthetic, but it's also a safety component. Uh, again, if we're investing into these buildings for the next twenty years. It's hard to, uh, to leave a building that's heaving and causing drywall issues and, and whatnot across, across board every single month.
Yeah. So this, this project here, this scope was like the cheapest we could get it without, um, a significant rebuild. Uh, and anything else increasing. So that's just at thirty four million, you can see the educational programming at the high school. At the middle school's really not there either. So it'd be, it would, it would jump up to, you know, forty one, forty two million. And not addressing that structural issue there.
It's still not going to create any more room and you're still going to have with the kids and the programs downstairs.
It is going to create more room because, um, uh, in this drawing. Uh, what did you say? It's, it would be, there would be a trees off of this wing. There would be a, a pro, a three story build that wouldn't be so significant into the, the parking. But we get three stories so that we could get this in other placement, do some programming over. Um, it's, what'd you say? Nine thousand square feet?
I think, I mean, that was the, what area we stood out there, drew a, drew a line, yeah.
It's a, some, some more square footage. And it also allows like the parking garage could be reconfigured to maybe some robotic spaces or, um, B and G can go in there. So space wise, it gives us more square footage, um, that we don't have on this number yet, but would do.
And we've identified that we do need additional square footage one way or another. Having itinerant space and people that are locker room or not locker dressing rooms. So since we just do not have. I mean, just if you, just doing a quick map, and this is where I say like, I think there's still. Hard decisions on what's in, what's out. If we didn't know educational upgrades. We didn't do anything to the football, soccer, bus barn, and we tried to just do every. Uh, facility assessment at the four main schools. It's still thirty seven. And again, to not include intercom, mag releases on doors, our safety and fire.
Yeah.
Yeah, fire alarms.
Pretty good.
And I'm not, I'm not advocating that you need to do every facility assessment, but I guess it just shows like. The process when you have to go through and cut that list, there's, there's a lot of things on there. You've, you've got to. Make some hard choices and that's where.
What defines those things in a facility assessment?
So we, well, you, we all hired, uh, engineering architect group, engineer group, and they walk through and they look at. The facility, they assess the light. So boiler has typically a thirty year life. If you have a boiler that has. Less than ten years left, they're going to mark it as something that would potentially need to be replaced. And that created a. Really long list, which is that Excel file basically kind of. Uh, the architect contractor worked to kind of pull those pieces out, the contractor priced each and every one of those items.
That's that eight hundred page facility master plan.
Yeah. And so each one of those items, we, you know, priced as best as we could from the assessment that they did. So. Place mechanical units, replacing the plumbing piping, the pieces they talked. That's where we found all the ADA issues, the architect locked their entire lights, each one of them. Comes up with a narrative or a, you know, what that solution generally might be. And then the contractor puts their best guess on it with. With that level of information. And so ADA wise, you, you, you may have to say, well, we're going to go in and we're going to fix fifty percent of the restrooms or we're going to fix. Seventy percent of restrooms or, you know. Replace seventy five percent mechanical. That's where we're not going to touch the floor into the paint, you know? Some of the things are, that's where it's, there really is a what's, what's more important to, to you guys as, as a district, you know? What are the things we need to prioritize the most? Because I think at the end of this, I can, the one thing I can promise you is you won't do everything. Like I've never had a. A bond ever be able to do everything. It's just the nature of. Never get all the money you need.
Matt set it up for us to take a tour of Carmel Middle School. It's beautiful and it's, uh, they're doing a lot of job. And I know you talked about the, the cost adding. So I think, I mean, uh, for us, I think the Suzie's information around the best coming back at a higher match now seventy, seventy two percent. That affects escalation costs and all of these potential possible scenarios. And the best grant is due on February fourth. I can just tell you that I think where we are in those discussions today, I don't think we're, we were close to having. A really refined, um, product that we would want. Or even in this dialogue, we met, um. Hello, that, that we met about three weeks ago or so. So, um. This is a lot to determine by February fourth and what I, I know we don't, none of us want is that when we submit the best grant. It's what we're going forward with and that we're completely united. So we don't get the best and then we have to change and. Go through what we did last year where we didn't have a final number until April thirtieth, August thirtieth. So that, that was just really hard. So I'd love some, some thoughts about you all. Just here's where we are. Here's some possible scope and plan. Matt has been doing this because I think he likes us as a person and I think that they.
I still like you guys.
But I don't want to take advantage of that.
I just spent an hour and a half here. It doesn't.
Truly not getting contracted because trainer's doing a lot of work for us nonetheless, and I don't want to pull people around. And we're not really set in where we want to go as, as a board and school district. So I'd love to just throw that out to you all.
It was me and I was a soul, making a soul decision. I would say we move forward as well again last year and go further.
Can I ask you, Gary, with that fifteen percent escalation, everything's going to cost more. So we'd have to take some things off. What?
I think if we took some, I, you know, what can we take off? I don't know, but I think it would have to be at the point in time where. If we go for the full scope and as we're building. Reasonably, we have to maybe make those decisions as, you know, a change or whatever during the construction. But I would like to say ultimately that we would go and attempt to do everything we could to give this product.
So I think that could still like the nineteen million dollar rebuild, uh, where we moved middle school up. So it wouldn't be the twenty, twenty three million. It would be more like about nineteen million in addition to these other costs.
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with last year's numbers. I wouldn't mind the outreach around. Again, what we, what he, I mean, I have no problem taking the middle. Again, what we, what he, like, I mean, I have no problem taking the middle school where, and it's lovely. It doesn't make any sense to me. But if that's what the community wants, I mean, I guess that's what we do, but they just have to be aware of what we lose when we make that decision. So, um. But I, I can't see us getting this number down at all. Yeah. But I do think that we're gonna have to look at reelegating, and I don't know how that affects the timeline. But, um. Anyway, that's.
Well, like what Natalie said, you know, with regard to community outreach and saying, here's what we had. I, I think a lot of this was also education and a lot of it was timing. And so you can show, here's where we were, and if you wanted these things. If you didn't want the combined campus or what have you, here's your alternative. And you can then see, it might even be more or maybe a little less. My, my understanding previously that the combined campus would be less. Then, you know, so, but then the community's response a lot of times was that they didn't want that because they thought it was extravagant or what have you. Well, if we show them both options, you know, I'm a taxpayer too. Um, so, you know, I do take this seriously, but I also want something that we're not, it's not stopping. Where we're continuing to, um, to put, um. Anyhow, giving, giving the community an option and to show what the alternative would be. Essentially, just so it's transparent, it's laid out there. I would support that, you know, and now we're in a situation where the cost of goods is drastically higher.
I wonder. You know, we have time to do any kind of survey of the community. Would say not before the fourth. I mean, not in terms of what we'd have to put together. I feel really good about it with this.
Yeah, I think you would have to hunt on at least a large best grant for this cycle. You could still go after roofs, some safe entries. Uh, so you could submit one of the two best grants. So we had that by November, it was right before Thanksgiving. Suzie had to, like, commit to, and not that we have to do it, but if you don't meet that deadline, then you can't join the best game. So we have two, two man right now. You could untop the big one. It gives you a chance to pass the bond, but it would only give you one shot.
Which would work some safe entry.
A lot of times when best, if you have a bond, a already voter approved bond, and you apply for best, that's very, um, nice for, for, for the best board. So if it was, uh, we needed to ask for forty, forty million from the, from the, from the voters or whatever. And the map there, the state had seven million. Um, w- w- we can, we can, you can write ballot language to include. If it is, uh, approved by best, here's what includes. If it's not approved by best, and we have to start selling those. There's, I mean, there's a lot of different things.
Basically, you're in a plan A, plan B going in. But then you have all lot, lot more time, but then you would only have the twenty, twenty-three cycle. You'd only have one shot at best really within, within your deal.
Yeah.
Just as the pros and cons, gives you more time, but you will. So the best grant was approved for nine million dollars last year when our number that we were gonna ask for was twenty-six point six million was the number of the best grant. And then we changed.
Sixteen is our contribution.
Right. But, but the, the, the language of the best grant, it was that, that we were gonna have a twenty-six point six million dollar bond. Correct. It might have been approximately twenty-six million dollar bond on the ballot was the language that the district that we put in the best grant.
I just said that that's what we could bring to the table from any voter.
I mean, what, what matters to the best grant, they just need to know if you're paying for it by bond or you're paying for it by cash.
Okay. We could have put the minimum of sixteen million as our bond, our bet. They just wanna know you have a match.
That's how you're gonna go above the match. Because if, as what happened, if you fail, your money, then they have that list and then they can quickly slide it to the next project or the next step. It seems like having that number totally locked in is a necessary mandatory thing since our number, we were about to ask people for was six, sixty percent higher than. Yeah, you don't need the bond number locked in, but I think it's the thing we, that we, that I guess you started with was it's a big chunk of the bond you're gonna commit to a, I mean, I felt like the mistake that maybe was made last time as we had this twenty-six million dollar commitment. As we, that was our best grant of which, you know, we had to pay sixteen million for. And then you build a bond around that with that already in, and you're at a number, obviously, that wasn't, uh, passable. Right? So I think that's the concern is that if we take one piece and commit to it without really having an agreement on the bigger, bigger pie. You, you really quickly narrow your ability to make choices or make different, different.
That we're on board with the scope of what we're putting in the best grant because you can't change that once the best grant approved.
That's, so you could do that. I guess I'm just trying to put out where your risks, what, what the pros and cons of, of doing. Cause with the best grant, we have to describe to them pretty well what we're gonna do.
Since we were right back where we started at meeting, forty-seven billion dollars. Below forty, somewhere the other.
And what does that include? So that it's, um, it, it, it's long-term, it's, it's, it honors uh, the spirit of magnitude and everything, but also that we have community engagement as well. Um, I, I, I've just been honest and say, I think it's a, a matter of time. And I don't think we have time between now and the fourth to, to really determine that. And I don't want us to do what we did again for an entire year and, and then have an election, election fail. But I think people really want to see, see go. So that's, that's where I would say, are you all okay? If you wanna go forward regardless, I, it doesn't feel like we're in a place where we can even make a determination now.
They'd like to skip the ball this cycle, best grant.
The best grant, best grant, and we consider what a bond would come for twenty-twenty-two. And then what that would include in the ballot language would be.
Maybe those are the best grant.
Yes.
You could still go after best grant for roofs and safe entries, uh, on this round, if we make that decision.
That's right, cause we, we can, we can put that in scope. We can put roofs. We can put some of the safety and security things, but what this best would not include would be any kind of remodel or okay, renovation, I get it, those things.
Who would have matched me with the best? Still be the same.
Yeah, still be the same.
And then we could go back for, if we, as you, as you mentioned, um, if, Matt, we kick the thing best. We could add that into our plan, right?
Yeah.
Is that, would that make sense? You would do the next, the next cycle. So the next cycle is you commit by November normally of twenty twenty-two. You would have your application due in February of twenty twenty-three, and you'd find out around the day.
So, like, we just went for roofs and security. Best grant for that, we still have to come seventy percent of that.
Yeah.
We're still making, so let's go for a boat. Which means there's, put this right back in the same thing that I don't wanna be into. It's only halfway done. What we need to do, then we're gonna get the people again, because we're gonna have to.
And that would be, it would be the, whatever you, it would give you till November. But it'll give you a few more months to determine what this bond looks like. All best will know is you're going after roofs and you're gonna use a bond to pay for it. And so, timing wise, you create a bond that everyone's, this is it. We all feel good about the scope. We all feel good about the dollar amounts. We all feel good about everything. If that goes in November, you received your best grant in July. If it gets funded, it knows you're waiting till November till you'll be able to do any of that work. Your start point doesn't start till after the election. And then you would move forward with your bond. You would know you have one best grant, and within the bond, you'd have, you could still have plan A. We go after a second best grant, and plan B, we don't get the second best grant.
It gives us time to really flesh out the scope of what, um, what this could look like. But knowing that we have to take care of roofs, and we have to take care of secure entryways, and we have to take care of, um, fire alarms and, and those things. Those things have to happen. So we, we think we can get that and done, done in time for the fourth. That doesn't change any of like educational programming or those types of things, but we can take a little bit more time. Does that feel okay?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
It was all money in our budget. We can do, we can move our capital improvement budget up from five hundred grand a year to get some other stuff done.
And this, with our next, with our next budget. Yeah, I mean.
We gotta, we gotta make adjustments. We have to make adjustments.
But yeah, you don't, you don't pay for capital improvements with a bake sale. That's for.
We should, we have four million dollars in the bank though. So I guess the last thing I would just say is there other things I can give you guys that can help you over the next month or so that, that can help you dig into it more. We're not willing to do a first Zoom call and go through the Excel file one by one with anyone who wants to do it.
I don't know about that. I wondered about community hearing from you, to be honest with you. I mean, I feel like we can all say all we want, and we can just blah, blah, blah as a board. But until we hear from the community, that the community hears from you, the professional about some of this, then I think it's moot.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, I think some of the staff and rumor could people to hear from too, like, tours of the middle school. Dustin showing some of their challenges and the different.
And I'm not disagreeing with you, but we did building tours, and I heard from people, I mean, they don't wanna come out of their house. They'd rather have a Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
And, and, and have their wine in hand.
That's fair.
And, um, I'm just saying, they were like.
I know, I get it.
I mean, I literally, and so I, I'm kind of like, well, you know, it's democracy. If you wanna participate, then you've gotta be engaged and read us halfway. When people were kind of getting on me about things, and I was like, you gotta, you gotta leave your house, you gotta come do this, you gotta see this. Well, they still, still weren't having any of it. So that's what I'm saying. So if that's the case, and we've gotta do more. If we want more, we better do more. And so that's what I'm saying, host some more informational sessions. And yeah, have a panel of our principals, like, this is what we need at this building. And you being the voice of, and here's the logistical reasons why.
That's, that's a lot of the work we did through the master facility plan with the engagement, but I agree now that we've gone, we've gotten feedback through the DAC. We've talked about creating a bond advisory group, and that would be a cross-section of, uh, prime employees, retirees, business owners. And I think maybe that, maybe that's where we go back to the, what the DAC recommended is, we create that group, including a couple of board members. And, uh, we can start to build out. But I think what's important is that we have a firm deadline by like April first. We know what the bond package would include. And after that point, if we're not ready, we just don't try to put it on the ballot, cause that's what we got, we got too close up to the ballot language.
Absolutely.
I would say we can, we can have a target of April first or April fifteenth. Uh, it would be really important. That's how it came out.
You don't even have to come up here, Matt. You can do Zoom meetings.
I don't mind.
Okay, I just want to, sorry. So we're gonna work on a, a, an application to best that would include a seventy-two percent map around safety and security aspects that wouldn't affect educational programming. Um, and then with entering safety. And if we can include any other mechanical things in that, we can, we can think about it. Um, then we'll have a committee meet to meet together, figure out some scopes, and then we'll be convening.
One dollar amount of the best grant you're gonna go for.
Oh, no, yeah. I guess we'd have to see what the roofs and the securities could, could look at. I would think, I would think we would have a good shot at it, cause our match is so high, we're cheap.
And it's not a big grant, and there's new builds.
Yeah, twenty, they're gonna look at it. It'll cost them twenty-eight percent of whatever we ask for. I mean, it's not. I think that's good news, I guess. And does this cover ADA stuff?
No.
No, they don't. Save for them.
That's the thing, like, one of our, moving it up here, it was really important that the pathway, that pathway would need a significant, um, regrading. Uh, pricing. Well, I think that's, that's all we've. Thank y'all for engaging this.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Yeah, stay around. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cass.
Work session.